... properly noticed. Will you please call a roll?
Here.
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 We have a four. All right, and tonight will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by four students. Let's see, two from Reed and two from Oakwood if you want to come up here and lead us, that'd be great.
You want to see the flag though, right?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to China, don't feel like you have to.
I would do it right during this, but I'm going to skip ahead and give them a card.
All right, good. Okay, Board and Administrative reports. I have nothing to report, so go right to the Superintendent's report.
And out of courtesy to, out of courtesy to our Wave Robotics guests, I'm going to waive the Superintendent's report, do it after, because you've been waiting patiently, and I know you were in a conference room even planning your presentation earlier this evening. So we're really grateful to have you here, and we'll call upon Dr. Carol Lowenstein to introduce and lead you.
Surprise!
Surprise, that's right. Thank you all for letting us come here and talk about the amazing experience that Wave Robotics had in China this summer. We took, and I'm not going to say more than that, except that I brought six really exceptional Oshkosh area school district students with us who will, and their engineering mentor who will talk about the really great experience we had, and really the great program that is Wave Robotics in our school district, and something that makes our district really special, so.
So, I just kind of want to echo what Mr. Lowenstein said, and just want to thank you guys for having us here today. It really means a lot for us to be able to share this experience with you. So my name is Max Bossert. I've been a student of Wave Robotics for four years. I actually just graduated from Oshkosh North High School, and I will be going to UW-OKLare studying physics this next year, so. Sweet. We're just going to start off this presentation that we have here for you today. Wave Robotics, this is at the China Robotics Challenge. This is the fourth year that they have been running this challenge. There we go. So what is CRC all about? So CRC, China Robotics Competition, is started off by the China Urban Youth Robotics Alliance, also known as KIRA, and its goal is to help grow the FIRST teams across China. So one of the FIRST teams, do you guys know what FIRST stands for? For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. And within that corporation, there is also FRC, FIRST Robotics Competition. And within this competition, there's a lot of teams, there's over, I believe, I forget how many teams there are, I'm sorry.
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred? Thank you, guys. Thirty-five hundred teams. And there's a specific team from Washington, 1595 Dragons, who has been heading up the advancement of robotics in China. So with this competition, there were sixteen international teams that were invited to help with their workshop and competition. So there's two different aspects to this competition here. Both a workshop, where we helped different Chinese teams who had just started up, either teams who have been around for a couple of years, or teams who just decided to begin this year. We're able to give them different insights on different robotic processes that we've gone through and that we've learned throughout the years. Alongside that, they also provided us an opportunity to see their own country, and give us a little idea of their culture, so that we could immerse ourselves in that and better understand themselves, or better, sorry, better understand them, so that we could help them learn in a fashion that would be better suited for them. So on those 2.5 days, we were able to go out and see a lot of different sites that actually Ryan will be talking about here later in the presentation. The full regional competition with international, pre-rookie, and existing Chinese teams was run after the workshop, and it was a fun time, because the FIRST competition was held with everybody. So both the international teams, which some of the teams have some really, really good robots, and did, it wasn't much of a competition, so they allowed the pre-rookie teams to also have their own competition. So after the competition with the international teams, they allowed the pre-rookies to come back on, do a second round of the final matches that they had. So it was a really interesting time where we were able to learn about all these different countries, not only China, because there's teams from Brazil, team from Canada, a team from Mexico, yeah, there is teams from all over, we were able to get a better understanding of all these different people. So I just want to thank you, and I believe Ryan is next.
Hello, I'm Ryan, Ryan Ball. I go to Oshkosh West High School, I'll be a junior this year. So while we were there, we were asked to participate in several workshops. The first workshop was, we had to make two-minute presentations and give them to the group. It was two members from each team that were there. Unfortunately, we did not get to present, but we had a list of stuff that our team does in the community. The other workshop down in the lower right-hand corner was led by our Trent Robbie, he's a scouting on our team, and he talked about how to pick teams when it comes down to alliance selections, and he was helped along with another member from a different team. And the goal of the trip was to go and help Chinese teams, and we helped three teams, one of the teams is on my shirt here, and the other team we helped was 9077, the Awesome Robotics Team. Many of the students on the team spoke English, so we got along with them really well, and we kind of talked about the differences between the United States and them, and what they liked to do versus what we liked to do, and it was kind of interesting to see that. And when it came down to alliance selections, we actually got to pick them to be on our alliance, which was amazing. We were both, we were, we were probably more excited than they were. And, and there's a picture of me with one of the members from their team. I still talk to them now over WeChat, and it's pretty cool to talk to them. And we also help them to teach strategy during the elimination rounds, because it's important to teach, it's important to lead your team to a victory, so.
My name is Jack Wagner, and I am going into my fourth year in Wave Robotics, I'm going to be a senior at West High School. And in regards to the communications while working with the Chinese teams, they, as Ryan mentioned, they do speak, they spoke English and Chinese, which was very easy to communicate with. And the reason the Chinese teams were able to speak English fluently was they were part of dual-lingo high schools. And I think the biggest language barrier that we had was when we were trying to find specific tools that we would call like a Dremel or something, when it's actually like a rotary tool. But other than that, it was very easy to talk to them. And when they were working with their team members and other teams from China, they were talking in Chinese, and we basically communicate that way for fast. And then while exploring the more mainstream parts of China, there was a much larger language barrier, because most of the population doesn't speak Chinese, I mean, doesn't speak English fluently. So we mostly communicated with a lot of gesturing and phone translators and body language. But back to some of the experiences while working with the Chinese teams, I specifically had the privilege at the workshops to help our assigned Chinese team assemble a working pneumatic system. This is because our main pneumatic student was busy helping out somewhere else, and I only had a small amount of experience working with pneumatic systems, but thankfully using our online resources, we were able to piece together enough information to help our Chinese team construct a fully functional system for their robot. I was able to understand this intricate diagram because of my experiencing troubleshooting during Wave Robotics and other competitions in the US. As I continue to further into Wave, I've become increasingly appreciative of the real hands-on experiences that develop the skills that are valued internationally, and this trip has heightened my excitement for furthering my knowledge of STEM topics by illustrating how relevant, relevant it is, not just in our country, but in the world.
Hi, I'm Annabelle, I'm going to be a junior at Oshkosh West, and I'm going to talk about food in China. So one important cultural aspect, no matter where you travel, is the food. In China, cuisine is very different from your typical American-Chinese food. Although we were spoiled with bountiful buffets, we also had the opportunity to sample more traditional meals in Henan, which is a province that we stayed in. Our breakfasts, they included a variety of both Chinese foods and American foods. Some days for lunch and dinner, we explored the nearby mall to find places to eat. And these restaurants, like Jack explained previously, we use a mix of hand signals, Google Translate, and guessing to order. We often ended up with large plates of noodles, as well as a few bowls of rice to share. Using chopsticks to eat all of our food was a struggle at first, but for many, it was almost second nature by the end of the trip. On our sightseeing tour, lunch and dinner were served a little bit differently. One of the settings that they eat in is a round table setting, where they have a lazy Susan in the middle, and then there's like a bunch of dishes in the middle, and you get to sample all of these different choices. Another dinner setting is hot pot, where there's a boiling pot of food in the middle of the table, and you can either like reach in and grab the food, we had like gloves, it was kind of funny. You reach into this like boiling pot of water and food, and you take stuff out, and then there's also food on skewers that you can eat off of. So these different settings were really inclusive, and they allowed us to get to know our teammates better, as well as a chance to converse with other international teams. We also explored the nearby supermarket and purchased items that we were unfamiliar with, and shared them with the teams who then also contributed snacks from their own countries. Some foods we sampled included duck eggs, fresh orange juice from a vending machine, durian, corn-flavored Jell-O, pastries, and a watermelon that stood in as our team mascot. Stepping out of our comfort zone food-wise, we experienced a more in-depth look at Chinese culture. Even sampling scorpions, our group learned about this country through what we picked up with our chopsticks. Our team recognizes the importance of food throughout a community, which is why we partnered with the Oshkosh Area Community Pantry. We volunteer to help meet the needs of people in our area with the mail carriers' food drive, as well as other events throughout the year, and our team actually helped construct the pantry on Jackson Street. We are so grateful for the opportunity to experience a culture different than our own in China. Thank you.
Annabelle's making me hungry. My name's Kieran Lowenstein, and I'll be a senior at Oshkosh North High School this year, and like some of my other students, I am not wearing a Wave shirt, because one of the phenomenal parts of traveling to competitions, whether in the United States or overseas, is shirt trading. Annabelle actually traded all of her shirts at competition, this is her mom's. So this is Team 4613, a team from Australia, who had an awesome time communicating with and learning about both their culture and having a great time in China, which is just one example of the FIRST community and the little community we made while overseas. From our very first step on the Chinese soil in the Beijing airport, we saw Team 987, a robotics team from Las Vegas, and said, "You've got to play cards with us. We've got a six-hour layer, come on, guys." And they reluctantly accepted. We considered ourselves the most annoying Americans in the country. From sharing snacks, from Tim Tams with the Australians, to some Mexican-like sour powder, we held team socials, which is something you'd never expect from most of us. We, you know, most of us fit the kind of, you know, nerdy robotics kid stereotype, so we were really branching out of our comfort zones. One experience that really stood out to me was when we were waiting for one of our matches, we started playing cards, and at first, it was just us and some of the kids from the Mexican team, and then some kids from Turkey joined in, and even some kids from the Chinese pit next to us. So there were four languages going around all as we were playing, what we called the American National Card Game, BS. But not to mention, we played cards wherever we went, whether it was on the bus or traveling while sightseeing. That picture is when we were traveling at 431 kilometers per hour on the fastest land transport in the world. I think that our experience in China exemplifies nothing more than the FIRST Robotics community. Of course, while it does stem from beautiful friendships, it's all because of the robots. Between matches, we'd play cards, talk to each other, and learn about the experiences we've had throughout the world. And of course, as we traveled, we had phenomenal opportunities to get to know each other and the Chinese kids who we learned about. From world-class teams in China to a competition I stumbled upon this summer when visiting Carnegie Mellon University, it's clear that FIRST is a family. On a small scale, Wave is also a community here in Oshkosh, and we pride ourselves on taking the community that we've made in the basement of Perry Tipler Middle School throughout our community, as Annabelle said, with stuff like the food pantry. We also partner with the Boys and Girls Club, and go into our elementary and middle schools here with Hour of Color. We do STEM nights on Saturdays, and more, all throughout our community. Wave and FIRST Robotics changes lives, and we plan to keep doing that here in Oshkosh and around the globe, and we thank you for helping us have those opportunities.
Hello, I'm Natalie Anderson, I go to Oshkosh West, I'm going to be a junior, and I'm going to be talking about our STAR status in China. Throughout our trip, we had a sort of celebrity kind of tone to the Chinese people, figuring they don't really see very many Westerners there. So they came up and asked us for selfies, they even took pictures of our group as we walked by. They also would stop and just kind of watch us. This was kind of different for us, because here, we're just average, normal, everyday people. One of these things that, the first thing we experienced was at the restaurant we went to that was mentioned earlier, as you can see with the picture on the top left. Annabelle kind of explained most of it, we couldn't, we didn't know what we were ordering, because we couldn't speak Chinese, and our waiter didn't speak English. But through the use of translations and pictures, we got the whole restaurant to laugh at us. And then, though, he asked us for a picture with him, and that's how we got that picture. Later on that day, we went, we went back and we crossed the restaurant again. He saw us and was very excited to see us again, even though we weren't stopping. Another thing that happened was at the competition. Annabelle and I were walking out of the stands to get to the pits. A guard stopped us, and my first thought was, oh no, what did we do wrong? We have everything that we need. He gave us two water bottles, which you can see in the top right, and he ushered us toward these two women, and we had to pose with our water bottles. I think we were part of an advertisement. But this has been a very interesting experience, and it's, like I said earlier, it's very different from here. Here, instead, we help teams like Fondue Fire from Fond du Lac get to competitions through their fundraisers, but we also help fundraise for their teams, like we did with the lacrosse team, for them to get a chance. We also will share Folsky, the practice field we have, with other teams if they ask for it. We will also hold FL Regionals and Sectionals at the Y and at Trigg. Through this experience, we have experienced stuff that we have not experienced before. And through that, I think we've grown more as people, and as a group, we've grown closer, and I had a fun time.
Awesome.
So, I'm Ryan again. I'm going to talk about sightseeing. So the first part of the trip, we did, we helped out the Chinese teams, and then we had about three days to sightsee. While we were there, we went to see the Longman Grottoes, which is the top with all the little holes in the side of the hill. All of those are little tiny carvings of Buddha, well, they can either be little or big. The biggest one was about seven stories tall, which is very impressive considering it's in the side of a mountain. Another very touristy spot we went to see was the Terracotta Warriors, which I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with. It was an amazing sight to see, because it's just a massive building in like the middle of a plain, and a bunch of clay soldiers that are about my size, just hundreds of them. And then we went, also went to see the Shaolin Temple, which is, has a bunch of monks there that go and do their monk stuff. And then the lit, that was our hotel there, it was about like eighty-five stories tall, and it was the tallest building in Zhengzhou, and it was interesting, because it's like we're staying in that. But it was, it was a fun sight to see at night when it's all lit up, and there's a bunch of people around it on the boardwalk. But that was some of our sightseeing, it was very impressive.
So, I'm Kelly Waters, I've been mentoring Wave Robotics team for, this will be my ninth season. I'm a software engineer at Oshkosh Park, and I really enjoy it, I guess, because I've been here for eight years now. So you guys have heard them all talk about their experiences in China, and then kind of how we tie that back into what we do here in Oshkosh and in like the region. So we have students from, because we're not directly affiliated with the high school, like most other teams are, probably like ninety-five percent of other teams are directly affiliated with high school. And the advantage for us is, is that we can have students from west and north and north, we've had homeschool students, we've had students from Amro, we've had students from Winnicottany. So that's different and unique to us, that we get, like, half the time, I don't know what school these guys go to, because it doesn't really matter to me, but it's nice that we build a community that way within the high school students, then we go out and help the community at large. We've consistently had thirty to forty students for over those ten years, so this will be our tenth year. And then with the China thing, that, ooh, that changed more than I thought it was going to change. We do expect to be invited back next year, I think we made a really good impression. And we, you know, we were talking about all the teams they helped, and how we were social, and playing cards, and like knew everybody, and so I hope we get to come back next year. So the one thing that really impressed me about these guys is that like, holy cow, were they out talking to everybody. I was not expecting that. Normally, we go to competition, and like you do your thing in the pit, and then we go out to dinner, and nobody really like talks to anybody else, but they would be like, "We set up dinner with this team, and we're going at seven o'clock." It's like, okay, I guess we're going to dinner at seven o'clock. Or when Trent, who's not here, he bought a teapot while we were out sightseeing, and he's like, "I want to throw a tea party," so like we threw a tea party. It was really something that I was not expecting, but it was really fun to see that, you know, they just totally exploded, and it was like, we're having fun with everybody. So we would like to say thank you, school district. I know we had, it was the end of May when we got invited, and you know, it normally takes like a year to plan a trip like this, and we did it in like seven weeks, so like thank you, thank you, thank you, and I hope you realize what a great time that we had, what a great experience it was, even like I've never been to China, and it was like so awesome. So that being said, and that we think we're going to be invited back next year, please let us know what we can do starting now, to start planning the trip next year, so we're not next May going, hey, remember that China thing we did? Can we do that again next year? Then we also want to thank you for the use of Tipler, that's been a great space for us. We do kind of want to like take over the whole room, so I think we'll be talking about that a little bit later. And for Sarah Ludwig, our student advisor, that, you know, having her as a resource for the intermediary between the schools, so we have the different schools that have, you know, their pre-absences forms and all that stuff, so it's really great to have her, and we really appreciate the support you give us for that. I also would like to thank Eric Leferman, who didn't get to go, but did a lot of work on coordinating with teams that have gone, so when we had questions, he would be kind of the go-to person to ask somebody else, then helping with putting the robot together, getting that ready. We also want to thank K&amp;M Crating out of Freedom, that we had to ship our robots, and we were like, oh, we've got old crates, we can use that, no problem. Well, like a week and a half before it had to ship, we found out we had to have like special heat-treated goods, so we're like, holy cow, how did we find that? So they were really great, they were like, yeah, sure, we'll do it, and we'll do it for free, like awesome, that's what we want. So thank you, K&amp;M. Then also, thank you to our other major sponsors, Oshkosh Park, Triangle, Schneider Electric, Galro Steel, Venus, and Folsky Electrical.
Can we see the?
Oh, yeah, and we got a trophy.
I want to see it.
Yes.
Pass it around. What was the trophy for?
That was, like, the first-year teams that went got the inspiration award, so it's for inspiring the Chinese team. It's big, and tried to put the chip in the back, the first like twenty minutes after we got it. We were taking a picture outside, and he set it down, he must have set it down just right, the chip off the back.
It's heavy, it's very heavy. Oh, that's so cool.
So did he keep the chip?
Yeah, we had it in the box.
Call it that chip.
Oh my gosh. So who ate the scorpion? I have to know. They all raised their hand. Way to go. No, she's like, uh-uh.
I took the pictures.
Like, what are we, thumbs up?
Yeah? No, it tastes like chicken or...
Who's this crunchy?
You never know, right? Good for you guys for trying it.
How was it prepared?
They had live scorpions in a tank, and then they stabbed them with a skewer, and then they put them in the deep fryer, and then they seasoned them.
Oh, wow, wow.
They were fresh.
Fresh, but well done?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Well, thank you for, all of you, for representing our school district so well, and for the adults who have devoted hours and years to the success of this program. I know many students have left the program and have gone on to college and university work, and it's like military related to the STEM field, so you've been great ambassadors for our district, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
And I hope you know that people, when people in Oshkosh go out other places, they talk about Wave Robotics. It's a huge source of pride for our community, so thank you.
Thank you so much. One should note that one of the sponsors, Folsky Electric, is very proudly, they, I believe, are the occupants, and they purchased Green Meadow Elementary School. Having been representing the school district at the time we sold Green Meadow, I had a chance to meet Mr. and Mrs. Folsky, and they went, met, and they met in school together at that building, and now they own the building. And it's just one of those wonderful small-world trivia issues that I think is delightful about the school district.
We used the Green Meadow Gymnasium before ours.
Yes. So it's a wonderful connection, both for you and for the school district to have them involved.
Well, okay, that's hard. Did you want to use some of your...
We'll still have a, yeah, but this is kind of anticlimactic compared to this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
The Superintendent's Good News Report for August 23rd, 2017. Students in grades three to five participated in summer school at Carl Treger Elementary School, worked around themes that, about cause and effect reactions, STEM challenges of solar, chemical changes, and coding. They had, these are all pre-students who will be moving on to our program. They had their hands-on daily activities, were required to work with partners and groups to work through their projects, and using the scientific method. They enjoyed the challenge and couldn't wait to return to class each day. Congratulations to our, to the custodians pictured here, who participated and won the team and individual safety room challenges at the annual WASBO Custodial and Maintenance Conference in July. The safety room challenge placed individuals in teams in a room where they were asked to identify and give remedy and possible safety issues and hazards in a 2.5-minute timeframe. Great job, guys, and thank you for their leadership. You'll find a very short Superintendent's List, as I was out of town last week catching a cold. And listed here are the events that have been in the Superintendent's hands this past week. And then I would like to call upon Dr. Dunlock to update the Board on some good news relating to the whole issue of enrollment, and a meeting that was held this morning with our principals on being able to continue to work on balancing our school district's budget, and to deal with our enrollment projections and open enrollment transfers.
Yeah, about ninety minutes ago, I was asked to give a little bit of a report on this, and I was not told I'd be following Wave Robotics. You know, you never want to follow a winner... You know, you never you never want to follow a winner and that's kind of a hard group to follow. But we were able to pull together some information that I think might be helpful, not only for you as board members, but also for community members, because we've made some significant changes this year. But it's really important to understand that you can't you can't separate enrollment from some of the decisions that we've had to make to keep the budget balanced. And specifically what I'm referring to is the six FTE elementary school reduction. And what that means is for people who who might not realize that is that we we just we were able to be more efficient in how we did things and we ran with six less classrooms at the elementary level spread across the fourteen schools. And it wasn't like we went beyond our normal class size numbers. We've tried to stay with that and we've had some pretty good success. But what it meant was we didn't have as much flexibility as we typically do. We didn't have as much excess capacity for people who would move in or certain special requests. So we had to be very, very particular. We also had some changes to our process that I'll talk about in a moment, but that actually helped us get more accurate information. But just to kind of give you an idea, getting getting the schools ready is is an amazing task and we have countless people in the district who work to do that. But the enrollment components really start last year. The enrollment process starts in mid-February for the for the upcoming year. And just to remind people of this process that we have on the screen, we start in mid-February, late March. We the data is prepared in Infinite Campus and thankfully, as you've seen, our data systems have gotten very, very clean so we can really lean on this information and make accurate decisions. We roll it up from the previous years. That's very traditional. But then we do do our out-of-attendance draft meeting in mid-April and that's the first kick at staffing where we say, okay, we've rolled the numbers up. We think we have these numbers of students and we know we have these amount of out-of-attendance requests for people to attend schools that are not within their attendance area. We also have open enrollment where we bring people in from other districts and we try to approve those as well. So it's sort of a an interesting aerobatic routine as we go through the different approvals and make sure we do it all in the right order. The other thing that will happen at this time is we will normally communicate preliminary approvals and rejections to the parents right away. So if we approve you in April, we are guaranteeing for a year that you're approved. And then we don't go back and revisit those decisions. We've done it. We're going to live with that. Usually what happens is the principal calls and welcomes them to the school that's accepting them. We also have the other scenarios where we can't approve it, at least at that time. And what will happen is the principal who's giving them the bad news will call them and right on the heels of that, the principal who is their home attendance area principal who may be accepting them back will call to welcome them. So we always try to do double down on the communication so everybody feels welcomed and they're being brought into the environment properly. So then we we pretty much sit on it and we continue to get enrollments and we realize that a lot of moves, a high number of moves occur between that moment and today. And we continue to get out-of-attendance requests and we continue to get registrations. This this morning from about eight till eleven, we met with all the different principals and then we go back at this one more time. And the process is pretty pretty solid. We start with those people who had to be involuntarily displaced and those are people who at their home school, we did not have enough room. And they're the first ones we try to get back. And if we adjust out-of-attendance approvals or denials to make that work, we do that. And it's sort of a if you if you ever have an opportunity to watch the process, it's it's interesting because we have to continue to go around the table until we've handled all the different requests. Then what we do is we communicate that information out to parents and then we're ready to go. So some of the information comes in relatively late. Most people know their out-of-attendance request was either approved or denied, but there are new requests that we constantly deal with. So rather than give you a full overview of the out-of-attendance numbers, I thought I would focus on the on the involuntary transfer data. This may not look good, but it looks a heck of a lot better than it did forty-eight hours ago. Forty-eight hours ago, I would have assumed we would have had eleven to twelve Lakeside students not attending Lakeside. In all reality, we will have five. So what has happened is after registration and after our principals and secretaries spend a lot of hours calling those people they didn't hear from, we get a real solid read of who's coming and who's not coming. And then we go ahead and process those. So Oak Lawn, you can see the red shows areas where at at the grade level where we do have some involuntary folks. We have nineteen Oak Lawn students who who cannot attend Oak Lawn and in most cases, not all, are attending Reed or they're attending Merrill in the other cases, which is our overflow. Lakeside, similar situation. Kindergarten, we did have eleven. At one point, we had fourteen, but now we're down to five students and most of those will be attending Smith. Oakwood, we have two at kindergarten, two at second grade, and two at fourth grade. That's far less than I was anticipating. That's actually pretty good news right now. And there's a good chance that we will repatriate those students prior to the end of this year or at least give them the opportunity to get back to their home school. Jefferson, we have two kindergarten students and one fifth-grade students student and Webster has one kindergarten student that we are not able to to accommodate. So once again, those are those are the thirty-four students who are currently slated for involuntary transfer. They get special status. We monitor their those classrooms throughout the year. The moment there is an opening, they get a phone call and they get an opportunity to go back. In most cases, they don't. In most cases, they either really like, I mean, we have fourteen really good elementary schools and more often than not, they really make it feel like home. So then their children don't want to leave. They want to stay where they're at. And we don't force them. We say, that's fine. We'll offer you one more time at the end of the year and if you still want to stay, then you really become an out-of-attendance student. And we try to accommodate those requests as well. So that's kind of kind of in a in a very quick fashion how all of that happens. And this is this is literally two hours old information that we have right now. So are there any questions on out-of-attendance or involuntary transfer or enrollment?
It I would describe it as as dealing with fourteen chessboards with jumping rights in between. And it's a complicated process, but handled well and our principals come prepared and Dave's support staff do an outstanding job of providing the data and having all the data so that that process can work with dignity and great deal of support.
Two individuals really deserve special recognition. Roxane Casperson and Kathy Rothie, they spent a lot of hours the past couple of weeks. Their attention to detail is second to none. And without without having all of that information, there's no way we could be making these decisions. So in these meetings, I sort of am the over person overview person who makes the decisions, especially when the decisions when the situations come up that we haven't seen before. Though it's usually my piece and they keep the data flowing the whole time, so I have accurate information to make those decisions in consultation with the principals. So it goes very, very well. But it would not go so well without those two ladies and all their hard work. The other thing on a more positive note is our online registration system. We initiated that for the first time ever and as of today, we have eighty-nine percent of our children registered already through online registration, which for a first go at this, that is far higher than I thought we would. And we probably will will easily break ninety percent. We may even get higher than that as we get closer to the year. So this has been overwhelmingly popular amongst parents. So we've learned a few things already. A, it's it's a very efficient process. It's very lean and it has allowed us to avoid some pretty significant costs. It's also decreased the lines at all of our schools, which I think everybody likes. When I think back to two to three years ago and parents were having to stand in line for two, three hours for the pleasure of paying student fees, it's kind of nice to be able to have most of that that automated and online right now. I think it's just great customer service that parents can be doing this from home, but it also brings a few a few challenges with it. We have made some data integrity improvements, but that's because we have parents' eyes on their own data. So we are, you know, we just get one more set of seventeen thousand eyes looking at all that student information and we've had hundreds of corrections, most of them minor, but really significant corrections, which is which is great for us. Here are some issues. Password resets. The old system had a very intricate password routine. It's moved to a very simple system, but we don't always have everybody's email. If we get their email in the system, they can handle the password resets on their own. The system will handle it for them. It just emails them their password reset. So that'll get easier as we go. We created lots of new portal accounts. That's all good news because they'll be able to check, they'll be able to pay fees, check their child's progress, et cetera, now that all those portal accounts have been created. And it helps us connect with them in the event we have an emergency. Because if that data is accurate, then when I initiate the campus messenger system, we're getting to the right people. The browser history and cache issues, sometimes what happens is you know, when you work on on a computer, it'll remember your passwords. So when people forget their passwords, their browser may remember their old password and they will constantly call us and say, hey, this may not be working. Usually what we'll tell them is, hey, why don't you try a different browser quick? Does it work? Yep, okay. That means your your old browser is remembering the password and then we help them help them reset that. So we're happy to do that. And then also, we've had a few issues with firewalls and filters blocking sites and that's mainly with employers. Employers will will have in some cases a far more strict firewall set of sites blocked than we will, sometimes due to security purposes, and they will they they may block us out. So those are some other things that we're helping people work through. But those are pretty minor and the overwhelming response has been positive.
Can I add as a parent? And I've had other parents come to me. So after I registered and I was done registering, there was after your registration says you're done registering, can there be a button to tell you to go pay? Like continue to go pay or remember to pay? Because I was like, oh, I guess I don't have to pay. I'm like, well, I know I have to pay. So then I was like, do I just pay the first day of school?
I think Sue wants you to pay.
Was just this, yeah.
I did it the opposite way, actually. I actually paid first and then was like, realized later that I had to go do something.
Yes. So the only I knew because I was one of those parents that were really on top of it. And I got a call from Sheila at Lakeside, are you, your kid's coming? Yeah, I'll go do that. So she told me where to go and so I went in there, but then there wasn't the link to go pay and I'm like, so I was like, do I pay the first because now because I have an old email, I had the new dot r dot com email. So I didn't get any of these notifications. So then I heard other parents. So I did go in there and update my email to my current email. You know, my forwarded one because I know those don't work. So I never got any of this. So I think Steph told me, you know, and so I went in there and it doesn't forward you to go pay. So I didn't know because I hadn't read the other information. That I thought, well, maybe I'll just send a check the first day of school because I know what those fees are. I can look those up. But then I thought, well, I'll go check. And so I went into payments and there it all was. It was perfect. It was easy. But there I think that there needs to be some kind of button to say, next step, please go to the payments.
Go pay your fees.
Yeah, go pay me.
Right, right. Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure most parents did that, obviously, but I was like, huh, that was kind of, I mean, I had to go search for it. You know, does that make sense?
Well, especially, yeah, especially if you didn't go through it right away. Yeah.
It's kind of like if you book an airline ticket and they instantly try to take you to sell you a car rental or a hotel room.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's just, this is, you know, now you're done.
We can look in and see if we have that option and if if we don't, we can suggest it to them. But if if we don't and they they don't put it in there that we have the ability to do that, we can also change our process a little bit to make it more apparent for people.
Or just a reminder, not that there has to be a link to go pay, just say, next step, please go to payments and pay.
Yep, yep. And we could deliver that through the portal as well.
Sure would be nice.
Yeah, so I mean, by and large, it's been it's been an improvement and people have been very, very appreciative to us and and very patient when their passwords had issues and they've been appreciative of the the staff helping them through it. So that's kind of nice, too.
And one of the customer service advantages certainly has been I haven't had a single call about the issue of parents having to take off time to afternoon and the whole issue of convenience for families not to have to take a half a day vacation to register their children.
And since you brought it up, the the new dot r r dot com, the old Roadrunner email accounts are the one thing we are encouraging parents to do. And if anybody's watching on TV, I would strongly encourage parents to get a different email account if you're going to want to get things from organizations like school districts. Because what it does, and we've we've worked with them on this before, is it does not allow the user to whitelist us. It basically says, once a once the thirtieth email comes from the same place, they cut it off. And there's no, even if it's coming from a school district, it's it's just cut off.
Well, I did a new email. I just have all of my Roadrunner forwarded directly into my Gmail now.
Right. But what we found is sometimes people, when we send email broadcasts to those Roadrunner accounts, given the fact it's coming from one place, once it hits the thirty-first account, we've been told it'll start blocking them. So we get some people who'd say they're not getting the notification. So if people are not getting the notifications, we we can help them set up a free account of their choosing, whatever whatever service they wish to use. But then that we just want to make sure that if people have an email address in the system, that it doesn't get blocked on the way out. And there's really nothing we can do to that because it's actually being blocked on their end and it's an automation and it's not just us. It'd be any organization that's sending mass emails. So just something to be aware of. So that's it. That was that was just a brief update of where we're at.
And I believe you also have a report that relates to all of this from our listening session from two weeks ago.
Yes, we we in the listening session a couple of weeks ago, we had some parents who came in who were talking about not just the out-of-attendance process, but the involuntary transfer process and how can that be that that we wouldn't be able to plan for some of those things? And we do plan for them. But for example, let's take Oak Lawn. If we take Oak Lawn, we don't have another classroom at Oak Lawn to add a class even if we wanted to. In some of our schools, we have that ability to say, wow, we have seventeen extra kids because that's what Oak Lawn's number was. We have seventeen extra kids. We would just add a kindergarten section. That'd be very easy to do. But at Oak Lawn, we don't have the room to necessarily do that. Plus, you have the six FTE change that we made to try and tighten things down. So all of those things came together. The good news is, is you've seen with the actual numbers, while I still think thirty-four is too high, it's still pretty modest compared to what I thought we were going to be seeing, given the fact that we have six less classrooms out there. So it's just something to be aware of. The involuntary transfer process works very well and once we explained it, once we explained it to those parents, as well as the other parents I've talked to, they all get it and everybody agrees that it is fair. They don't necessarily like the fact that their child might be impacted by it, but they they realize it isn't an it isn't a situation where the person dictates the response, it's the procedure dictates the response, so.
I thought that parent meeting was very productive in that. As one who believes in continuous improvement and the fact that we can learn from other individuals, I thought they had some some good ideas in terms of tweaking the system. For example, letting parents know before school is out in June that their child might be involuntarily transferred rather than have them attend open house in May and then get a call in June. And they also made suggestions about the timing of phone calls, that they not be made after ten o'clock at night. And so administration thought that those were a couple of things that could be improved on in in terms of customer service. So I think those parents were very reasonable and very helpful in suggesting ways that we can improve our our customer service and better serve children in that Oak Lawn neighborhood.
Any other questions for? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does do any committee chairs have reports?
Education Committee. The Education Committee met on Thursday, August tenth. In attendance was myself, Kelly Olmstead, Jim Evans, Barb Herzog, Stan Mack, Julie Conrad, Kim Brown, Nicole Peterson, Beth Wyman, Alyssa Wilsnak, and Patty Anderson Schu. Ms. Peterson gave a presentation on our efforts to be college, career, and community-ready. She talked about the ACP, which is the Academic and Career Planning Program. It's a state-mandated program and students will have time during their homeroom starting this school year at the high school level where they will learn about ACP and what opportunities are available to them, including life and career skills, career exploration, financial literacy. So starting this fall in 2017, the rules of ACP require districts to provide planning services in grades six through twelve to develop a long-range plan with community stakeholders to include that plan on the district's website and to review the plan annually. The plan must address local, regional, and state labor needs in the areas of manufacturing, information technology, and aviation, and ensure that education and training meet the labor market needs, have a process to engage parents in ACP, include a description of career and technical education available, and professional development for school district staff on pathways in ACP, and include strategies to engage businesses, post-secondary education, and workforce development. Mrs. Peterson continued to talk about OSD efforts such as career cruising, and sharing information with students regarding labor trends and post-secondary opportunities, parent involvement, teaching parents about the tools that will be available, and how to have conversations with kids, and growing youth apprenticeships and work-based learning opportunities. We also received an update on our community partnerships. We received updates on some of our partnerships, such as the National Manufacturing Month, Project Grille, opportunities to tour the Fox Valley Technical College, job shadow days, and innovation conferences. We also discussed the PALS program, and PALS is the acronym for Partners at Learning. A suggestion was made to create a toolkit to give partners ideas on what needs to be done. Our next meeting, we adjourned at nine thirty-five AM, and our next meeting is September seventh at eight thirty AM.
Thank you. Any other reports?
We have a policy and governance meeting report tonight. The meeting was held on Thursday, August tenth, and those present were Barb Herzog, Stephanie Carlin, Kelly Olmstead, Stan Mack, Sue Schnorr, Lori Myron, and Jim Macy. Attorney Macy talked with the committee about the background and result of a recent Appleton School District Court case regarding violations of the open-meeting law. He made a few recommendations for the district to maintain compliance. A, add language to existing policies. Further discussion about the exact language will take place at the September Policy and Governance Committee meeting. And then we gave us, he gave us a sample. Quote, "Nothing in this policy or other policies of the board are intended to create any governmental body of the district unless such intent is expressly set forth by written board policy or a specific vote of the board. As such, nothing in this policy is intended to be a rule or order of the board creating a governmental body for matters involving administrative meetings within the district." End of quote. B, review current policies where the word "committee" is used to determine whether or not the above referenced language needs to be added to any of those policies. Further discussion about the language will take place at the September Policy and Governance Committee meeting. C, the Human Growth and Development meeting will be publicly noticed. That's an annual meeting that's required by statute. D, when forming a committee, keep in mind that having board members on that committee may make it seem to be a board committee. Determination will need to be made as to whether or not the meetings for the committee need to be publicly noticed. And E, be sure when a committee is created that it is noted to be either an administrative committee or a board committee, and properly noticed if it is a board committee. Add language that these people work together in collaboration on this administrative work in the case of an administrative committee. The next meeting will be September twenty-first at ten AM. Thank you.
Any other reports? Everybody? Okay, great. All right, is there anybody here that would like to speak on non-agenda-related items, or agenda-related items for that matter? Seeing none, go right into the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. This will be, these will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. I've been asked to poll six B. Anything else? All righty. The board will consider approval of, number one, minutes of July eleventh, two thousand seventeen, special board meeting; two, minutes of July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, regular board meeting; three, minutes of August ninth, two thousand seventeen, regular board meeting; four, minutes of August tenth, two thousand seventeen, executive session, special board meeting; five, bills payable; six, A appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salary schedules; seven, independent hearing officers for expulsions for next school year; eight, revisions to administrative guideline thirty-four-ten, administrator compensation; and nine, administrative guideline thirty-four-ten, A general exempt compensation guideline, new.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll. Olmstead?
Aye.
Feschel?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Eliason?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution six B, be it resolved that the Ashgash area School District Board of Education approve the retirement as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Garner, I had asked again that this be pulled. We find ourselves again with an employee who wants to enter a new age and stage of life called retirement. And Lori Felix has served as a certified occupational therapy assistant, most recently at Oakwood Elementary School and Carl Trager Elementary School. She's been employed with the district since nineteen ninety-seven, and her effective date of retirement is September third, two thousand seventeen. So I think it's appropriate to thank her for her years of service to the students and families of our school district, and wish her well in this next phase of life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll. Feschel?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Eliason?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I would like to call upon Dr. Brown to introduce, and welcome to our center of stage here, our recommended candidate and just approved by the board, Katie Neiman, to the, for the position of Communications Director for the school district.
So I just want to take this opportunity, so you could all put a face with a name. So this is Katie Neiman, and she will be joining us on September twentieth, correct?
Yes.
So we're very excited to have her. Don't have to say anything, but if you want to share a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Very excited to be here. I think there's a lot of great opportunities for the district and communications, and just moving forward with some of the initiatives already going. I have a, you know, seven-year background in communications, in the employee side, as well as the business and community side of things. So I'm really looking forward to working with all of you, and learning from you, and moving things forward.
I just want to say, I've been on the board for seven years, and I think I've personally been just so excited to have this position, the fact that we were able to finally open it up and create it, and now there's somebody here. So, welcome, we're really excited to have you.
Thank you very much.
And Katie, it was good to have a pilot board meeting for you to observe. This one is really quite short and efficient compared to some of ours that run longer. But this board has rarely ever gotten into, and a discussion we had early on was, no good decisions are made after nine PM. And we've been very efficient with that. But to have a sense of that, and part of responsibility will be also to help both our employers and our community better understand board meetings by reporting on them as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, individually considered resolutions, there are none, so requests for future agenda items. Anyone?
We will have a whole series of workshop items that I'll be prepared for the first meeting of September for you, that will be updating you on lots of things, and then also reporting on what, at this moment, we are holding our breath, but we believe that we should have one of the smoothest starts because of lots of efficiencies that have been built in through the school year. And on the, our next board meeting, we should have the opportunity to share that. I've been assured that Monday, Tuesday, letters of pickup schedules for transportation will be going out. Sue and I have had discussion this noon about where we were with transportation, and Cobusson's computer has not broken down, as it has in the past, but we are, we are in a wonderful, comfortable position, and when Jane in Transportation, who reports to Sue, is still smiling at this time, we know things are going well.
Great, thank you.
I would just like to suggest that we update the long-range and short-range agenda with input from administration. It appears that we have a very thin list of topics, and I don't think that's really how that's going to play out. And we just voted on one of these tonight that's listed under long-range, and that's the independent hearing officers for expulsion. So it would be helpful to me to know what's coming, and so I'd like a more complete list from administration, so that we can plan our work more efficiently.
Good.
Thank you.
We'll get that for you.
Any announcements? All righty. Then we need to, or I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Nineteen point eight-five-one E Wisconsin statutes, A, review superintendent search firm references, and B, create interview questions for search firms.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll. Carlin?
Aye.
Eliason?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Feschel?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.
We have a five-minute break.